Thank you ladies to the flag, United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. You've been noticed that this meeting is being electronically recorded. Tonight we do have a special recognition of... No, I don't see Mark. Who? What's your name? Oh, who's that? We do have a special recognition of our very successful Attleboro High School football team. If you could all step forward, please. How you doing Coach?
Good, how are you?
Very good. We just wanted to recognize as the committee for you, the successful season that you guys had, ten and two, very, very proud of that and I believe ranked number six in the state in the end.
Yeah, we were. It was a great year for us. We had a great senior class, great leadership, and I think everybody really bought in. The community was great as well, so it was overall a very good year for us and had a lot of fun.
You know, we would have built this field a lot quicker if we would have known the result we was gonna get. I mean, it was just a... It was a great, it was a great game and beating North thirty-four to nineteen on Thanksgiving Day, that was an extra bonus on the end.
Yeah, we had, well, started with fan. We did good there and then we beat them on October eleventh, North Attleboro, and then we beat North again on Thanksgiving Day, so it's a, it's a good start for us.
Absolutely.
It was absolutely great and let's hope that we can keep Hilda here for quite some time now and put that thing on the lock and key and keep it away from North. Anybody comments from the committee?
No, I just think beating North twice and beating North once in the same year is, doesn't get much better than that, so.
It was a good season.
Again, thank you Coach Rock and you did a great job with the team and we'll be sad to see the seniors leave, but I'm sure there's going to be ample bodies filling there, those uniforms in the fall, so.
Great senior class, unbelievable senior class, and Clark was one of them, so.
That's right, our student rep Brandon Clark is also a member of the football team. Brandon?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. You have to make... At this time, we're gonna move on to open forum. Open forum, this is a time when members of the public may address the school committee. Open forum is not a time for committee members to engage in dialogue with members of the public. Guidelines for open forum are available to you up at the podium. Please know that we're interested in what you have to say, but we cannot respond without background information on your issue. Please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. We have nobody wishing to speak in the open forum. Okay, we're gonna close open forum. I'm looking for a approval of minutes from eleven oh four thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a consent agenda, but something we left off, I wanna start with a student representative, Mr. Brandon Clark. I believe he did a peer survey that he'd like to share with the committee tonight.
Max and I, as part of the SAC, we decided that we wanted to piggyback on the Wi-Fi initiative, trying to install more internet access into the schools. And the first way that we thought we could sort of help was setting out a survey into the, into the school and finding out exactly where our baseline was in terms of technological availability, like if the kids have internet access at home or if they have smartphones. And the numbers came back pretty shocking. Between Max and I both, ninety-four percent of kids had internet access at home. We did not expect that at all and the conclusion we drew from that is that kids have so many opportunities at home and then they come into school and they have these capabilities and they don't have them at school. And another stat that we drew was that eighty percent had smartphones and based, from my experience, I've been asked to use my smartphone in class and I have to use my 3G data network and I have to pay for that, so I'm essentially paying to do my research for the school from my own pocket. And another big thing was that kids, a bunch of, approximately seventy-five percent have laptops, but they don't, they don't want to bring them in. About fifty percent of the people that have laptops said that they would not wanna bring them in at all because the culture is such that they feel like they'd be an outlier if they had that sort of technology, but the truth is they, they're not. Most kids have the capabilities now to be able to use their own devices for research, but it's just the fact that we don't have Wi-Fi, it's not encouraged as much, so they don't consider it as so.
Good, Dave?
Thank you. Mr. Clark, Mr. Lancaster and some of the other student representatives presented this information to a student advisory council meeting earlier tonight, and I think it would be useful both for this committee and the incoming committee to have the results of the survey disseminated so that all the committee members can, can get a sense as to what information they were able to obtain. Brandon alluded to it, but there were a number of things that stood out, I think, both to the adults and the students in the meeting earlier tonight in terms of the degree to which accessibility was measured at least for purposes of this survey. And I think that the other thing, if Mr. Clark wants to, I think this is worth bragging about, so if you wanna talk a little bit about the response rate that you got to surveys and for those of us who administered surveys in the past, that was one of the more jaw-dropping numbers that they were able to...
Out of around seventeen, eighteen hundred kids in the school, we got fifteen hundred responses.
Wow.
So, that tells us is if we ever need to get the, if we ever wanna get the community's input, we just have to put Max and Brandon in charge of getting their feedback and we'll, we should have a pretty good response rate. But it, it is, it's a survey, all surveys have to be qualified, obviously, but the information that they were able to obtain, I think, is gonna be particularly useful for both the school committee and the administration moving forward, so we'll make sure that that is circulated to, to all members. And thank you, Brandon and Max, for your work on that.
Yes, Brandon, thank you. That's a big number of surveys, that's a great, you know, that's better than special elections in this area, that's like the first...
It's better than like presidential elections.
But you really did hit the nail on the head and it's something I've been saying and I know it's gonna be the focus of this committee moving forward and probably the number one priority of this district is technology, but when the kids have the technology at home, but they're coming to school, they don't have it and that, that is a problem. I mean, that's the way the world is getting right now, but it seems, you know, years ago that's, you came to school to, to have the things that you didn't have at home to get the education and now we seem to be falling back the other way, so it's something that's really gotta be a priority and I know Superintendent Sheen has made it a top priority and I think we're actually gonna be talking about some of those things tonight on how we intend on getting there. So, I thank, you know, all you guys for getting your input, your input is very important to this committee, we're trying to make decisions based upon what the students, the teachers and the support staff need and obviously the number one thing for that is the students, so thank you Brandon and welcome to the school committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Last, last month I attended the, the committee that they were conducting the survey, Max and Brandon, and it was very interesting because they had a list of things that they wanted to do to enhance technology within the district, as you recall, and it was gratifying to be able to give that student body committee a status report of what we've been working on and where we are in the district and, and some of the principal players working on this initiative, so it was, I think, information well received by the student body of where we were behind the scenes, of what a priority this actually is within the district.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Sheen. Any other comments? Thank you, Brandon. Moving on to our consent agenda, we motion to accept a donation in the amount of five thousand dollars from an anonymous donor to be deposited in the renovation fund for the Attleboro High School Apprentice Cafe.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to accept a donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from the college boys from Attleboro High School for the Advanced Placement Program.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to accept a donation in the amount of two hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents to Attleboro High School's Answer for Cancer Fund for McDonald's.
So moved.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to accept a donation in the amount of a hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents to the Attleboro High School Gifts/Donations Fund for McDonald's.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to accept a donation in the amount of thirty-nine dollars from Target to be deposited in the gift donations lines at Wormsoda Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to accept a donation in the, of surgical supplies at a market value of thirteen hundred and sixty dollars from Cardinal Health to the CTE program at Attleboro High School for educational use.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass General Law fifty-three A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to city council for approval of the following tangible property items, dictionaries for each third grade student at Attleboro Public Schools from the Attleboro Elks for an estimated value of three hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. I think I just wanna add, I know this is a, they do this every year and it's a great donation to the schools and very, very worthy cause that they put on here from the Elks, so we totally appreciate that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass General Law fifty-three A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to city council for approval of the following tangible property items, Zulian and Sabian symbols with an estimated value of four hundred dollars to be added to the band inventory at the Wormsoda Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass General Law fifty-three A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to the city council for approval of the following tangible properties, one nineteen ninety-five Buick Sentry with an approximate value of thirteen hundred and seventy-five dollars for educational use from William Kazowska, I hope I got that right, to the CTE department at Attleboro High School.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass General Law fifty-three A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to the city council for approval of the following tangible property items from Charles Herman of the Worldwide Tech Services for Attleboro High School, one Dell D six-ten laptop with an estimated value of one hundred dollars, three Dell D five-ten laptops with an estimated value of seventy-five dollars, six Dell three-thousand laptops with an estimated value of seventy-five dollars, one Dell forty-six-hundred-dollar laptop with an estimated value of a hundred and twenty-five dollars, one Dell forty-seven-hundred laptop with an estimated value of a hundred and thirty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Pursuant to Mass General Law fifty-three A and a half, a motion to accept and forward to the city council for approval of the following tangible property items from Michelle and Jonathan Russo and Meta Tech at the Hyman Fine Elementary School, four ViewSonic VE one fifty-six LCD monitors with an estimated value of two hundred and forty dollars, and five HP Compact Pentium four PC five-thousand keyboards and mouse devices with an estimated total value of three hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to declare the following outdated Roland piano lab equipment housed in a Wormsoda as surplus, twenty-one Roland EP three sixty-one keyboards, sixty-seven headphone headsets, one Toshiba cassette deck, thirty-three hundred and twenty AC power adapters, twenty-one wooden desks, one Roland FP keyboard, two TC sixteen controllers, seven Roland EP three keyboards, seven hundred and twenty power adapters and sixteen MIDI cables.
So moved.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have a motion to approve a field trip proposal for Koella Middle School for approximately a hundred and forty eighth grade students to attend High Meadows on June seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen, it is student-funded.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, on the new business, we have superintendent's appointment of the Aspen Project Manager, Mr. Ken Sheen.
Member of the committee, it's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you the new Attleboro Public Schools Aspen Project Manager. As you recall, at the last meeting and at other meetings that we've discussed some of these pieces, this Aspen Student Information System, if you will, that has been purchased by the Attleboro Public Schools is only reaching about five percent of its capability at this particular time. At this time, I would like to introduce to you Ms. Karen Pereira. Karen, would you please stand? Karen Pereira comes to you and to the Attleboro Public Schools with a outstanding background regarding her experience and knowledge and skill with the Aspen Institute. She has provided this skill in other school systems, including Hanover, she has also worked at some of the top levels for the Aspen Institute itself. As you are aware, I'm looking for nineteen different modules or platforms to be developed over the next two to three years for the Attleboro Public Schools, which will pay major dividends for the, the structural process and by which we can be consistent in dealing with many of our entities that we have to, the least of which is part of our transportation concerns. And so I introduce you now to Karen Pereira.
Nice to meet you all.
Welcome. Please take a seat, would you like to say a couple words? No, you can sit up at the big table, please.
Oh, thank you, I've never done this before. I'm in this position, but I think that we have a lot that we can accomplish in a very short time, the least of which is the transportation piece that Mr. Sheen was speaking about. That's maybe a week worth of work, maybe less, depending on access to the people who bring the information in and out, but I've been doing this a long time and I've done it for many districts. I've actually, I've worked on the help desk at Aspen and I've, I've worked in West Warwick for several years doing this, so Aspen is what I've been doing for the last, since two thousand and ten, so I hope that we can actually bring forward all of the initiatives that Ken has put forth in very short time.
Committee comments? Dave?
Just, congratulations and welcome to the Attleboro Schools. I mean, I'm sure from your experience working with this program, you know how important it is for a twenty-first century school system. I, I think at least, I think the committee feels that it was a wise investment that the school system made a few years back, but that's only gonna be true if we're using it to its fullest capacities, so please let the superintendent know and let us know if there's anything we can do to support you and help you to, and help this program reach its full potential.
Absolutely.
And I know this is the first time we've met, but I think Ken can verify this. Thank you, thank you very much for being here.
I'm very glad to be here.
I'm out here one week to fix a transportation issue, that is basically, father this district for way too long. I can't tell you all who enjoyed, I am to hear that, it's just one of the number one issues we deal with probably as a school committee. And I would just like to, when Ken was talking about, how many modules would we say, Ken, nineteen?
Nineteen.
Now, is that, is that the stop, is that the starting point and how much can Aspen really do? I mean, is this an unlimited module thing or is it for a school-based system, should we be looking at nineteen and it can go up to twenty-five or the nineteen that goes to...
They're always in development. Currently, I think that, if I recall correctly, they're working on an RTI module that meets the, the standards for at-risk students, so that they'll be able to actually pull those out. So every, every year, there are new pieces being developed by the Aspen people, so I was on their advisory committee when I was working in districts, so they, they make a strong effort to improve the product, to bring new pieces into the product, there's curriculum development over the last several years, they're improving on, I think that one of the agendas is their health module, which is, has been an issue, so the improvements on that can only help. Special ed module, that's been around in Massachusetts for a long time and it, it's a very useful piece of the tool because it plays into all of the requirements for activities in special ed, you know, having a certain amount of time before a letter goes out and a phone call goes out and the next piece and the next piece. It, it's already built into it, so converting over the data will just enhance the ability to use the special ed, to have the teachers have access to special ed information that in the past they would have to go and find somewhere or get a printed document, it'll be right within the system. It also would include five oh fours for students who have a need for a five oh four rather than an IEP, there are the abilities to add various different forms that the students will use, workflows, we'll be able to bring in for the parents, the ability to go in and submit their information for the changes of emergency information each year, that will, you know, be submitted by a parent, then approved by a person in the district just to make sure, you know, to go through it and make sure it's accurate and so you won't have as much paper going back and forth, you can also publish report cards, so you don't have to print out all of them, if you've got the okay to, just publish for parents, then they can just get, they'll get an email that says, "Report card's been published", you can go look in the portal, 'cause that's a big part of the agenda, getting the portal up and running correctly, so that one parent logs in and sees all of their students, not logging in for each student individually. That's gonna be a big piece of this, but it's gonna require a little work on contacts. So, overall, it's just gonna enhance the ability to communicate with parents, the ability for staff to get information that they need right away, the ability for parents to keep track of their, their kids and their activities. It's, I know, you can tell, I really like Aspen. That's why I'm coming back to an Aspen district. I really believe that it's, it's a fantastic product and so...
I'm glad to see you're excited, 'cause I'm very excited about it, too.
I, I...
The limited stuff that we do have, I use quite a bit to go on there, you know, for my kids in the system, so it is important. Since you have a, you know, a lot of experience in, how, with some of the current system that we use, when you switch over to get the nineteen modules working, what's a realistic timeline between having what we use now and that transitional stage it's going to take to get everybody comfortable at Aspen, meaning the students, the teachers and the administration?
Well, depending on which modules you go with first, I think first will be most likely, as you said, the transportation and then cleaning up contact records for, for families so that we can get the portal up and running effectively, so that the parents have an easier way to communicate with the teachers and the administration and to see about their students. That can be done within the year, depending on how much work has to be done. Each and every piece has its timeframe, like special ed will require some data conversion to bring over old modules, but in terms of the use, they, we might be able to get it up sooner depending on, you know, cooperation between departments and, and things, and then do the import after. It depends on what we, we find when we talk to Aspen about the cost of data conversion and everything, but I have some contacts there since I worked there, so things are a little smoother. But I think that certainly in the timeframe he's expected for all these things, it's possible. I, I think that there's much more that can be done even in that timeframe in terms of just small things that aren't being utilized right now, that maybe even the simplest things by staff members on how to do things more efficiently, learning and to understand how the project, product works, integrating different pieces, so when staff members are putting information in and that they do it right, but they understand why it has to be done a certain way, those are areas where a lot of districts fall short, their staff doesn't understand why they have to do it a certain way, so they're just kinda, "Oh, this is fine, I'll get it in." But I think if we, if the staff members are brought into a better understanding of it, it works a lot better. And there are ways for that, for, to enable them to do their jobs better and easier, because there's a lot to the product that it does that most schools don't even know about, you know, how, how to get information you need out of it, how to query out information and get just the information you need, finding the fields you wanna see, doing a quick export, maybe if you need some information to, you know, get together for the superintendent, things like that, that can be done a lot, in a lot more efficient ways than they're doing them. So, it's not just the big projects, it's also solidifying that everyone's knowledge, helping the teachers to understand how a gradebook works, not just you put your numbers in. The difference between using different functionality in gradebook and how they work, how state reporting works, I know Tom Evans, I've spoken to him many times when I was at Follett and, you know, he has his group of questions, so I'll be able to actually help him to understand what he can do for himself to be, to have more knowledge of what he's doing, issues like that. I mean, I think that there's so much potential for growth and I, I see Attleboro being one of the forefront users of Aspen over the next few years.
And Ken, just before you speak, I mean, I just want everybody to know, because I know they've heard the word Aspen used quite a bit by the school committee and by Superintendent Sheen, but it's not, it's, it's a great tool, but we're utilizing it first to fix the problem areas and then the next stage is to use those modules to improve upon existing programs, so it's not like a magic wand, we can't make everything go away and change it, but the, you know, implementing it right now is to fix the, the problems that we know are big problems and then improve upon basically the curriculum and stuff that we have now.
Absolutely, yeah. We have, the problems probably are not as big as you would think they are, it's just, as with anything else, you know, you have good data and you have data that's not so good, but this is my area of, of strength, working with data and cleaning it up, so I don't see it being as big of a problem as you think it will be. In fact, when the contacts are cleaned up, I think the majority of what's gonna be needed to work on is just getting all the initiatives completed, because the contacts are contacts and phone numbers and information that you need, like busing and, and all of that, so once that's all set up, everything else will just kinda flow into it. And, and the training to make sure staff understands how it goes in, that fixes ninety percent of the problems.
I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead. The, the, the piece of Aspen with regard to... The, the piece of Aspen with regard to Karen is, is, has a multitude of pieces. The order by which you referenced before, the administrative team will put, will sit down together with Karen and administrative team and in fact chart a course by which what modules, what platforms will be developed first in a particular order. That's paramount, because they slide into one another. The second piece is that one of the, the strengths that Karen brings to the program in fact is the professional development piece. Not only is Karen capable of providing that professional development to the principals, but also the clerical staff, the secretarial staff, et cetera, but she enhances what we currently have in our technology department at central office. So Jonathan's department in fact becomes enhanced and every single person that comes in contact with Karen, they become a more viable entity because now they're being trained in a particular way that they hadn't been before. So, and the other piece is that Karen doesn't know, well, she does, because I spoke to her a little bit about that and some of her colleagues, is that we still have the infrastructure piece that we have to deal with within all the schools. We have the bandwidth piece. So you can have all the technology you want. If you can't run it, you don't have the juice to run it, then it's no good. So we still have the two outstanding concerns, the infrastructure piece that we're working on, we've got the bandwidth piece that we're working on with the mayor, and we also have the Aspen piece that we're looking at to create the modules. At the same time, we're providing the professional development in the district, not just to teachers, but to secretaries and other people. So Karen is a major piece in, in what we need to do in order to move forward and to tie a lot of pieces together. Dave, did you?
I don't think, I just quickly, I think, you know, when we're talking about some of these pieces that where there's a sense of urgency because of the degree to which they've been so sort of prevalent on our radar and on the administration's radar, I think the urgency can't be discounted. And I think the thing that I know is a priority for the superintendent and it's one of the benefits of Aspen is the sustainability of solutions. So if it takes you a longer than a week to fix our transportation issues, that's okay, frankly. We've, we've lived with it for longer than a week.
It should.
What we want is long-term solutions that fix issues at a systemic level. And we know that that's, that's the point of you coming on board, it's the point of utilizing Aspen, so. But I think sustainability is the, is sort of the key word.
When it comes to transportation, it's just a matter of getting information flowing from the, the transportation company and getting it flowing to where we can access it and update Aspen. You set up jobs and it runs itself and you never have to look at it again. It's always up to date.
I, I hope that's true and I don't mean to sound skeptical in any way. I just wonder if it turns out there's a, you know, there still happens to be a transportation issue after we solve all these problems, we want to make sure that we're ready and to respond in whatever way we need to, to be effective.
Absolutely, but I promise you, there will be no transportation issue when this is over.
Okay.
I wrote this down.
This is a, this is a tiny little issue. I know it's big in, in terms of the effect it has on the district, but to accomplish it is not a really huge issue.
Sure.
It's just moving data. And Aspen has the ability to create jobs, to move data from here to there and back again, imports and exports, and it's not difficult.
Not for you, I'm sure. But no, but congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
We will, Bill?
Welcome aboard. I think there's going to be a lot of people in the district and all the different buildings, teachers and principals that are going to have your phone number extension taped up right by their phone. I think it's great that we're going to have someone in the city that is going to be able to just answer the questions that keep, keep coming up in the buildings, I'm sure, so.
Karen already received a round of applause. She was introduced at three o'clock this afternoon. We had a three to five o'clock meeting with all the building-level administrators and central office as well. Karen was introduced at that time to the people and they all gave her a round of applause.
It was nice. I've never felt so welcome anywhere.
You won't be lonely.
That's okay, that's not why I'm here. And Ken knows that.
We're glad you're here.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Welcome to Attleboro, we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Next item under new business is a superintendent's appointment of the Director of Student Services. Members of the committee, it is my extreme pleasure to introduce you to the new Director of Student Services. Her name is Joan DeAngelis. Joan comes to us, as, as you had read the job description last week that was presented to you or last month, and we saw how enormous this position was with regard to so many different entities. I myself was hesitant whether one individual could accomplish all the task. I have known Joan before. Joan DeAngelis comes for us, to us with ten years of building-level administrative experience. She comes to us with a central office administrative background as well in special education. She also has a clinical background prior to that and in fact, I believe that with the search committee, with the first interview committee and the second interview committee, she wowed all the people with her detailed understanding and knowledge about this job and how to go about implementing all the facets of this position. So at this time, I'd like to introduce you to Joan DeAngelis, Director of Student Services for the Attleboro Public Schools.
Hi.
Welcome, Joan.
Thank you. So I'm really excited to be here. I did look at that very lengthy job description and said, "What can I bring to Attleboro?" And I think as Mr. Sheen has said, I have an extensive background in not only being a building administrator, but also I served as a special ed director and a clinical social worker. So I feel like having all of those experiences, I really can come and look at all the programs, whether it's ELL or RTI. I know we've talked about the guidance program at the high school and I'm here to support all the students in the district, PK through twelve, and I've had lots of those experiences throughout my career of twenty years in education, so I'm very excited to be here.
Thank you.
Chris?
Congratulations, welcome to Attleboro.
Thank you.
It's great that we're going to have somebody to work on systematizing a little bit our, our guidance councilorship in the district. That's I think one of the most important pieces of what you're going to be doing. I look forward to that working out for us all, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Welcome. Glad to see you.
And I really know Aspen well, because I've learned it, so I will be using that as well. I think you'll find a lot of benefits. I know that coming here, and that's what you're working towards, will help me pull data from the district about students and what their needs are. So that system in general, as they've talked about it, you really can access great data for special ed and 504 and integrate RTI, which will be a, you know, a piece of what I'll be doing. So I've learned a ton about Aspen and I'd be happy to support any of the district-level people. I've learned it inside and out and run reports and I really find it's been really beneficial for the district, so.
Mrs. DeAngelis comes from a district in which has developed the nineteen modules of Aspen and in fact utilizes and those, all of those various modules and they interface with one another, but at the same time, it is the number one district utilizing the Aspen system in the country. So she's, has working understanding and knowledge and an application of what the Aspen modules actually are and how useful they can be. I think one of the things when Superintendent Sheen addressed the school committee about filling this position was, you know, especially in this time and day, I think a lot of people don't actually realize what the job entails, to tell you the truth. And I think in this day and age, there's a lot of students out there are not getting the total service, not just in this school, but I think this position entails out-of-school services, it could have to do with the courts, it could have to do with food programs, there are a lot of things that these students need nowadays, I mean, they didn't have actually one source to go to. You know, who can I go to see about, you know, specific needs, a parent or a student? So I think that's why this committee was really behind this job creation, if you will, on it, and I'm very glad to see that you stepped forward to do this. It's very important that our students get as much as they can. And it's, if you're told to go from place to place, most people just kind of just say, "You know what, just forget about it then." I've been to three doors, knocked on three doors, they haven't got an answer, so it's critical just when someone can go to that one door, get the answers that they need and the support that they need to get their, make sure that their children are getting the services they need. So it's very important and I'm very happy that you're here.
And I'm excited to learn more about Attleboro and hopefully use some of the community resources and really get to know people who are out in the community, to bring those linkages here, so there's a more personal touch, so that if, you know, people are homeless or in shelters or they need some kinds of supports, that I can provide that support and it feels manageable for families to get services and there's a linkage with the community and the schools. And I feel like that's something I'm very good at. We had a couple of hotels that served as shelter placements in the previous school system that I was at, and I actually went down to the hotel and did registration on-site and made friends with the hotel manager. I had his daughter previously in school and he really gave us office space to work with the families, because you can imagine being in a shelter placement and being an elementary student and have no connection to anyone at the school and these people have to trust their child's going to get on the bus to go to a school when they have no car. So I spent a lot of time down there making relationships with people so the kids would know who to find when they arrived at school. So I'm hoping we can do some community linkages to help support people in need as well as part of this position.
I think what the public should also realize, this is not really a new position. This is a vacated position from our ELL coordinator and McKinney-Vento coordinator. All we did was expand upon this, as Mr. Parent said, this is really a directorship and this is a huge directorship that encompasses all student services, all types of student services. So it really provides a great linkage for what the community needs and, and comes to expect from its school department, and we have a person by which they can automatically go to and be pointed in the right direction. And that's a valuable entity that a school system can have of this nature. So I, I think she's going to be a great asset to our community. I, I think what you're going to find in Attleboro, there's a lot of business partners in Attleboro that they've been so giving to, to the Attleboro schools. I think if you reached out to them with some of the plans like you just mentioned, you're going to get a very warm reception from, Attleboro does stand behind its own, they're a great community, so I know if you outreach to them and ask for support in what you're trying to put together, I'm sure you would have a lot of outside companies trying to support it, whatever you want to do, so.
That's great to hear.
Thank you very much for coming and welcome to Attleboro.
Thank you.
Things are looking up.
Yeah, there they are. Okay. Next we have on the new business, I'm going to make a motion to approve the resubmission of the Attleboro High School Hivac SOI application to the Massachusetts School Building Authority for reconsideration and forward to the city council for required votes.
To move.
Second.
Okay, discussion. And Tom, you want to come forward?
I think as we've all received the letter in the school committee, that our last application was rejected by the MSBA only because of what they feel there was other higher needs through the Commonwealth for those funds. I, I think my only question would be to Tom, that this is, would be the, is this the second time we've submitted this? This is the third time. The third time, okay. So, and we, we know that we have to come up with some type of Plan B, working with the city eventually on this thing. And can you express to the committee the reasons why resubmission is needed and why the vote of the committee is needed? Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. The reason why the vote of the committee is required is because the MSBA wants to make sure that we cross our Ts and we dot our Is. And there are a couple of documents that they want, nothing really earth-shattering, but one of the documents they want is they want a copy of the minutes from the school committee, where the school committee said, "Yes, we want to resubmit." They also then will want a copy of the minutes from the municipal council, where the municipal council agrees, "Yes, we're going to resubmit," so that the MSBA knows that there, when they go to review this application and the window opens on January tenth, we don't have to have it submitted on the tenth of January, but I appreciate, Mr. Chair, you getting the vote done tonight, because now I can then go to the mayor and ask him, "Can you try to push this to the municipal council at their next meeting so that we'll try to get this in the early part of that window of applications?" But two of the requirements are proof from the minutes of the school committee and the municipal council that in fact they, they're on board and they want to resubmit this task, that's how important it is. And that's the reason why we're, we're requesting the resubmission. I've already been in touch with Jason, he already has the application that was submitted last year. He's already in the process of reviewing it. We might make a couple of small, small changes, probably not, because this is our third time going around on this application. And essentially, we're trying to replace the heating, the ventilation and the air conditioning package at the high school with a brand-new package. And we're very confident that eventually it's going to get approved. It's just, as the MSBA stated in their email, they have a boatload of requests and it's not, and they did a very nice job of explaining, but pretty much what they said is, it's not that we don't think your request is legit, it's just that we have so many requests, we can only address so many, so you got to resubmit if you're interested, and that's, that's the reason why we're asking for, I'm asking for another vote.
Okay. Dave?
Mr. Rose, with regard to any of the small changes that could be made, and I haven't reviewed the application in its entirety, so if this is out of place, I apologize, but I know there have been some like additional instances in which we have evidence that we need improvements in this. Is that something that we may be able to add to the application?
The answer is yes, Mr. Murphy. Absolutely.
If heat broke on this day, that's more proof that this is a priority.
Correct. And what we want to try to do is take the, the negatives that, that Jason and his staff and Bill Rooney and his staff at the high school, which they, they navigated beautifully, but quite frankly, we want to use those negatives as an extra stimulus to show evidence that we really do have a need. And that's why I say when we make a couple of changes, it's not in regard to the structure of the application, it's really only in regard to showing the need a little bit more based on actual invoices that we paid, based on actual situations that occurred within the last twelve months, to show that this really is, frankly, this is more of a need now than it was before, because we can show specific instances on specific days when we didn't have heat in parts of our building.
Right. So, and I know that the high school administration, the central administration does everything humanly possible to navigate those situations when they occur, but if there's anything at all that can bolster the application, I think the fact that it's been rejected multiple times would indicate that we need to make sure that we supplement that with whatever information that we get.
I agree. I agree, Mr. Murphy. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Of course, go.
Is there a limit on the number of times you can submit? Okay, I didn't think so, I just wanted to make sure.
Even though we as a committee should put a limit on that, no.
Well, the, the problem with that is, they don't fix it, then we stop applying. We can't just say, you know...
If any more discussion, we do have the motion on the floor, that has been seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Resubmit, Mr. Rose. Okay, I have a motion to change the next school committee meeting date from January sixth to January seventh to coincide with the scheduled inauguration night.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passes. Press and I'll report, our Assistant Superintendent of the Schools, Mr. Dave Sawyer. Welcome, Dave.
Good evening. I only have a couple of items for you this evening. You have two retirements, Mike Fontaine, a graphic communication teacher at the high school, and Kathleen Belmont, paraprofessional for sped Title I in ELL at Studley. I also have two appointments, Jennifer Riley, paraprofessional for the Insights Program at Willett, and Christine Westfall, inclusion, specialty, paraprofessional at Willett.
That's a short one, Dave.
It's a short one. We don't, we don't like to do too much hiring and firing at this time of year, right?
Any other questions or suggestions for Mr. Sawyer? Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Moving on to committee reports, Finance, Facilities and Procurement Subcommittee, Mr. Powell.
All right, we got seven motions to go through tonight. First motion to forward to the full school committee for approval of the thirty-six-month lease with Conica Minolta for two BizHub 1052 press high-speed copiers.
To move.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Standards, none. Motion passes. Next one, motion to forward to the full school committee for approval of a three-year lease with payments of approximately $710.69 with payments of approximately $710.69 per month with IDS Holdings LLC, ODS Designee, for a Snap-on Tools wheel lineup for an estimated project cost of $22,513.27.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, no abstentions, motion passes. Third motion to approve the request for the budget transfer of the business manager in the amount of $1,40293.45 dated November 13th, 2013.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, no abstentions, motion passes. Next motion to approve the request for the budget transfer made by the Director of Special Education, the amount of $1,000 dated November 1st, 2013.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, no abstentions, motion passes. Next one, to approve the budget transfer presented by the business manager, the amount of $1,026,575.08 dated December 6th, 2013.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, no abstentions, motion passes. To approve, to send to the most, oh, I'm sorry, to approve, to send the most updated transportation report up to the city council.
To move.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, no abstentions, motion passes. And the final one, to approve the 36-month fair market value lease is in the amount of approximately $121.30 per month per each Rizzo EZ 221 printed duplicator for a total of five machines.
To move.
Second.
All those, outside discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposition, no abstentions, motion passes. Moving on to notification of bills and warrants. We've got six of them this week. And all right, first one dated November 6th, 2013, the amount $233,783.30, of which special funds, outside encumbrances, make $210.45, $10,454.43, special funds of $110.60. Federal state grants $240.32 and volunteer funds of $22,977.02. Next one to be in record dated November 13th, 2013, the amount $356,199.33, which appropriations make up $233,167.46, special funds of $9,644.89, federal state grants $39,868.14, and volunteer funds of $73,599.84. Next to be in record dated November 20th, 2013, the amount of $195,538.37, appropriations of $177,533.54, special funds of $1,295.68, federal state grants of $11,700, and volunteer funds of $5,034.22, and encumbered volunteer funds $246.93. Next one to be in record dated November 26th, 2013, the amount of $384,492.39, which appropriations make up $295,334.43, special funds of $728.8, volunteer state grants of $16,624, volunteer funds of $71,801.41, and incumbent federal state grant $4.82. Next one to be in record dated December 4th, 2013, the amount of $242,393.37, which appropriations make up $217,846.2, federal state grants $5,557.79, volunteer funds of $90,637.6. Last one to be in record dated December 11th, 2013, the amount of $404,323.99, which appropriations make up $377.82.48, special funds of $285,00, federal state grants of $9,761.64, volunteer funds of $17,194.87. Our next meeting will be held on February 5th, 2014 at 7:00 PM. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes our business.
Thank you, Ken. Moving on to Curriculum Instruction Subcommittee, Mr. O'Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our last meeting, our agenda included discussion about middle school, after-school clubs and activities and a park update. Regarding the middle school clubs and activities, we discussed the ideas of expanding our offerings after school. This is basically limited by buses and staff availability. So in the coming couple of years, it would be great if we could figure out a way to increase busing and staff to expand middle school activities. We also discussed continuing to build on our community partnerships such as the robotics club's partnership with Sensata. I think we sort of discussed the idea that these partnerships do great things for the students and help students direct themselves and their interests going forward, so. One of the other bigger things that we talked a lot about was building on the internal community relationships. So the middle school students would be integrating their activities with more of the high school students. We discussed a program, I believe it's called Amigos. It's a, I think that's a national program. And we talked about implementing that so that high school students are working with middle school students. One of the other things we talked about too was building on the relationship of the curriculum to expand the interconnectedness of the curriculum with these after-school activities. So it was a great discussion. We talked for quite a while on it. The park update.
I had a quick point about.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave. This is an issue that the curriculum subcommittee has taken up multiple times over the course of this term. And I think that the reason and the reason that it was on the subcommittee's radar and why, and how, one of the reasons I would envision it potentially being on the next committee's radar and committees after that is, was sort of summed up by one of our middle school administrators when Mr. O'Neal posed the question, if we could make one change, what would you like it to be? And the administrator said, well, in an ideal world, we'd expand the school day. And we know that there's a limitation on the practicality of that, that you can't just keep adding on hours in the afternoon. But we also know that as accountability increases and as the challenges to educators increase such that students need more and more to be prepared for life in the 21st century, we need to find a way to essentially achieve that goal within those limits of practicality. So we can't, it's not, because it's not about add or, sometimes when people hear that, they think you're talking about adding a seventh hour to the school day. That's not what we're talking about. We're adding, we're talking about adding a 25th hour to the day, which is not possible. It's, we've only got 24 hours in a day. But we have more and more that we need to accomplish and that's why after-school programming, particularly at the middle school level, has to be more of a priority than it's been in the past. And I think as Mr. O'Neal alluded to, one of the ways that we try to get more out of those programs is horizontal involvement amongst middle schools and making sure that the interaction between the high school and the middle schools is all that it can be in terms of developing those programs. So these conversations at the subcommittee level, like all conversations at the subcommittee level, are starting points. It's a, it's a way of beginning to get into an issue and seeing how we can do more for our students. So I would imagine that we would discuss this more in the future because we're not going to get to a point where we have too much time and not enough to convey to students. That hasn't happened in the history of education. I can't imagine it would happen anytime soon. So, thanks for.
Short update on the park implementation is, the good news is that implementation has been pushed back to 2015. The state has built a two-year transition plan and is moving very slowly to assure that the park standards are better than the ones that we're already working with. So I believe Mr. Sawyer will be presenting on this to the full committee, the new full committee. So that'll be a big one then, when that happens. You know, it's park. It would be great if we would get more information from the state about how this is really going, but I think we, we get what we get and Mr. Sawyer does a good job of keeping us updated on where that's heading, so. I want to really, real quick, take care of some housekeeping, if that's all right with you guys. I would like a motion to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
To move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So our last meeting minutes are approved. And I would just like to say very quickly, thank you to the committee I've worked with and to the citizens of Board Three who elected me. It was an honor and a pleasure to serve and I am going to miss this, believe it or not. And I am particularly, I have to say, going to miss working with Mr. Sawyer. It was really great working with you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report.
Chris, the honor and the privilege is definitely ours too. Nice serving with you and you did a great job with that curriculum subcommittee. You really did a nice job.
Thank you.
Totally appreciate it.
Yep. Next meeting's in March.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, moving on to the policy subcommittee. In absence of the other policy subcommittee members, I'm going to have Mr. Murphy take over the, for the minutes and the motions that we have on our agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, Dave.
No, that's all right, Mr. Chairman. After two years of assignments, this is about right to finish up with this one, so. With regard to minutes, I don't know that we have any policy committee minutes to approve, which is good because we don't have any policy committee members to approve them. With regard to business, and again, this is a policy subcommittee report of a meeting that did not take place, so we'll improvise a little, I think. And the only business that we have been asked to approve from a policy standpoint are the job descriptions for the positions that have been appointed tonight, which were previously circulated to the committee some time ago. So I think I'll just offer a motion to approve the job description as provided in the school committee packet for the Aspen projects manager.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The next position, again, the job description which was circulated previously, the Director of Student Services, that position was filled tonight, so a motion to approve the job description for the position of Director of Student Services as provided in the school committee packet.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? There we go. And finally, we do have this final position. I didn't know if the administration had a recommendation on whether or not this job description.
I would hold any votes with regard to the approval of the Director of Property Services and Transportation job description. You do have that copy. We are in the midst of looking at particular candidates, so I would hold that until we have the candidate pool necessary by which to go forward.
Sure. Thank you. And I, and we'll, obviously, that'll, that'll be taken up when the committee reconvenes. So the next meeting, according to this paper in front of me, is March 3rd, 2014. I think that's probably subject to change and you'll just have to stay tuned for when the policy subcommittee will ride again. So with that, Mr. Chairman, it concludes the policy subcommittee final report for this term.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate you taking over the minutes. I think they've heard enough of my voice earlier on, so I used to hear somebody different. There's just time. I'm going to make a motion, go into executive session consistent with Mass General Law, Chapter 3A, Section 21, subsection 7, for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes in compliance with the open meeting law and public records law. The committee will not be returning to open session.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Just before we start that.
Sure.
A little ahead of schedule. Just, I know there's people that have asked about how the pool is coming and I asked Mr. Sheen and with your indulgence, if we could just have Mr. Rose give us a very brief update as to the status of the main drain and when the pool will be reopened, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Tom? Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, school committee members. I'll be very brief. The answer is, the progress is coming along very well and four weeks from today, the pool should be open, January 13th. I have been in touch with Christie Close and Chuck Bachelor because they certainly are very interested on when the pool's going to open, as well as other vendors, or as well as other customers. The, the group started before Thanksgiving. Today, I went, I usually try to stop by about once a day. They're working very hard. Clearly, the pool's been drained. They've got about probably six to, around six to seven folks working on the drain. Was in touch with Jason last week and Jason has been fielding the various requests that come from the contractor. Everyone knows that once the contractor gets an award, the contractor's going to do that job, but the contractor's then also going to say, and oh, by the way, we noticed this and this and this and this, would you like us to address these things? So Jason very diligently is looking at each particular item to determine what we can do, what we should do, and then what can we do internally and what really do we need the contractor to do? For example, if the pool is completely drained, it only makes sense that at that time we grow out the pool because we know that it needs it and follow certain other recommendations. So at some point, there may be the possibility that there could be some additional expenses, none that I know of as of this point, because the price tag is $75,000 and we have that fund, we have those funds set aside. But they, they being the vendor, New England Aquatics, they're looking at other tasks or other things that they may spot. Jason's working closely with the vendor to determine what needs to be fixed, what doesn't need to be fixed beyond the main drain and each of those issues will be addressed. We want to make sure that it gets done, it gets done right, and that while the pool is drained, we take full advantage of proper maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thanks for the update, Tom. Okay, I did put a motion out and I should have added to that because this is actually just, we're just going with school committee policy. Executive session minutes is supposed to be reviewed by policy every six months, so we hope all school committee going forward would do so, so they don't leave the mess that was left to this committee when we took office in 2013, I mean 2012, I'm sorry. So again, I'll repeat the motion. Make a motion to go on executive session for the purpose of reviewing executive session minutes in compliance with the open meeting laws and the public records laws. The committee will not be returning to open session.
Second.
Okay. Mr. O'Neal?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Ms. Edel?
Yes.
Okay. I think five-minute reset.[1754.71]